Recording's going and the everybody is admitted in from the waiting room. Whenever you're ready to go, Mr. Chair, I'm all set.
Okay, call to order the zoning board of appeals for the city of East Hampton. Today is Wednesday, February 24th. As a result of COVID, we are following the pandemic laws laid out and rules, regulations laid out by state, local officials, et cetera. Are there any correspondences from any other boards committees or officials?
None save those that are relevant to our topics for review this evening.
Okay, and is there anyone who is present that is looking to speak to the board regarding an issue that is not currently on the agenda for the seat? And I hear no crickets. Okay, so with that, we will begin our hearing. First hearing is the continuation from last meeting for John Lozato, who's speaking, seeking a special permit under section 12.7 and section 8.5 with these Hampton zoning ordinance to establish an accessory apartment at his single family home at 63 Strong Street in a residential rural B zoning district. And is John present?
Yes.
All right, and do you have anything to say or are you looking to continue to next month's hearing?
Yeah, I did, I did have a few questions. All right. I, I sat in on the zoning ordinance meeting last night. So I could find out some information about the upcoming changes to the ordinances and how it would affect my project. And it looks like they're, they're pushing for some, some pretty drastic changes that are going to be beneficial for me. And one of them is that they're going to waive the size restriction for existing buildings. So and there's a lot of other wording there too, that's going to make it possible for you guys to waive certain things with size restrictions. And, and certain things in 8.5. So that being said, I'm hopeful that that's gonna, you know, happen soon, sooner than later. I wanted to know if there was any other things that anybody noticed in my plan that, that could come up so that I can be prepared for that. As far as looking over my site plan and the other parts of the project. Because we never got past the size restriction. I just want to be sure that everything else is kosher.
I have serious reservations on it. It has nothing to do with the size. It's not an accessory apartment. You're, you advertise, and I think that's important that it sleeps 10 people. Most accessory apartments are designed for two, maybe three people, not 10. And they don't come with a stage.
Okay.
It's not an accessory apartment. And I would have a hard time approving it as an accessory apartment. And I am a big, big fan of accessory apartments.
Okay.
But what you're proposing is not one.
Okay, so do you have an issue with the the occupancy? You would like me to restrict it to how many people?
Two.
And what is the reason for that?
Because an accessory apartment is a small accessory dwelling unit. I have never, ever seen an accessory apartment that is designed to sleep 10 people.
Okay, and how do you feel that that negatively affects?
Because you're going to have a lot more than one car in the parking lot. You can't bring 10 people to that building in one car.
Oh, I have, I have six parking spaces.
But your neighbors have rights.
Okay.
And they should not have to listen to all of your 10 guests getting out of their cars, gabbing, do whatever people do at a social occasion.
But why didn't they show up at the hearing to complain about that then?
I can't explain that. I'm speaking for all the other residents of, I believe, the city of East Hampton, who would not want to live next door to what you're proposing.
But then, but then they should show up to the hearing.
I'm showing up in their behalf. I have to understand, I'm only one vote. You need four.
Just trying to answer your questions, you know, I, I understand that I was ignorant. I didn't realize that there was an accessory apartment that permit that I needed to get. And I've already, you know, it's quite obvious that I've already rented this for quite some time. And it, and it's basically already been proven that it doesn't bother the neighbors. And, and that's why I'm asking if anybody has looked at the GIS map and realizes that, you know, my property is surrounded by 10 acres of woods. And that's why there's no complaints from the neighbors because I have this weird property that sits in the middle of the woods in this neighborhood.
Well, I don't want to debate your application tonight. Um, we have two other applications, but that's my opinion.
Okay.
I can tell you that until I see what the final decisions are from the, the subcommittee that's been created for the zone, for, for the ordinance review and what gets passed by the city council. I don't see a need to, to look at this a kind of piecemeal along the way. Because unfortunately, I think that we're going to end up with a, just something that's piecemeal together. I, my thought personally would be for you to withdraw without prejudice. And once that decision has been made, come back and reapply and, and move forward from then. Because at this point, every time we were coming together, we're trying to find, you know, whether it's a loophole or a little this or a little that, well, they say they're going to do this. That, that causes a lot of frustration and it doesn't give us a lot to make a ruling upon. So
I understand.
My recommendation for you as the applicant would be to withdraw without prejudice. And then come back and look at this at a point when we are, when we have all the, we know what the rules are.
I, I understand that, but that it also is very expensive to reapply. And, you know, I, I've got a lot riding on this. I've, you know, over the 20 years I've been here, I've spent 50,000 on this building. And that's in the last three months to bring it up to where the inspector wants it, I brought, I spent another 15,000. And, uh, you know, I, I'm a musician, I can't play. And I, I'm on unemployment and I, I really want to get this up and running. And I'm trying to work with the town to do everything I can to get it to where it needs to be. So I'm just looking for, and then, oh, and then I have this other part where the building inspector, my permit, it was also said in the last meeting that I had no permits, which is not true. I have a building permit and I already have all the inspections. And the building inspector allowed me to do that. The thing is, is I have to pull a new building permit because my old building permit stated that it was for restoring a barn. So I have to get a revised permit that says we renovate barn to accessory apart. And obviously he won't allow me to do that until I get permission from this board for first, this committee first, because obviously that would be like putting the cart before the horse.
But you did put the cart before the horse by doing all of those renovations with no approvals from anybody.
Yeah, but the fact of the matter is, is that I want an occupancy permit so I can use it. I want to go in there and play music legally myself, like I've always done, and go to the bathroom. The bathroom that was in there was 30 years old. So I had to go out and get a brand new plumbing permit besides, because whoever had a barn before put a bathroom in. And so I want to do it right. And I spent the money to get in, to do all the plumbing over again. And I want to be able to use the space legally no matter what.
So you're saying you've got a plumbing permit to redo the bathroom already?
I've already done all the work.
Did you get a plumbing permit to do it?
Yes. Yes, because the bathroom was there existing before I even bought the property. So rather than argue with the building commission and say, well, you've got a grandfather in that bathroom, I, I did the work. I, I hired a plumber and did every, I took all the walls off and did it all over.
All right, well, at this point, we are not in a position to make a decision based on the, those current zoning laws for it. So my thought would be that, you know, we, let's hold off until next month. Let's see how far they get. Let's see what they come up with. And we can, you know, we can continue, you know. And, and I understand your hesitation to withdraw without prejudice. So let's, let's go from there.
Yeah, I, I don't want to withdraw at this point because I, again, the, the cost, but also, you know, I'm gonna likely need the committee. They're also, you know, possibly accessory apartments will only need a building permit. All right, these new laws too.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
So at this point, we'll make a, a motion to continue your hearing.
Can I interrupt? Before you continue, because you did give the applicant chance to speak, do you want to see if anyone else is here to speak to this application?
Okay, is there anyone here to speak regarding John Lozoto's application? Okay, so at this point, no one has stepped up. So let's go ahead and do the, we will.
I make a motion, we continue this to our March meeting.
24th right now.
March 24th. March is the dump, you know, Groundhog Day month. Um, okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Tony seconds and all in favor with a show of hands? Okay, board hall is unanimous. We will see you in a month, sir.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next applicant is Chris Rogers. Seeking a special permit under section 12.7 of these Hampton zoning ordinance to operate a commercial establishment with uses retail and service, AKA number 10 restaurant and bar and number 40 indoor recreation properties located 105 Pleasant Street in the neighborhood business zoning district. Mr. Rogers, is he present or is Jeff Squire present?
Jeff Squire is here.
All right, Jeff, what do you have to say, sir?
Well, we had submitted, I think last week, a, a letter requesting a continuance to the hearing just because of some delays associated with, you know, updating floor plans and some of the other items that the board had requested during a last hearing to present to you. So just in light of just that delay, we requested a continuance to the next hearing so we could have all that in order.
Okay. Uh, can I get a motion for continuance on the application for Chris Rogers?
Make a motion for a continuance for Chris Rogers.
All right, and a second?
Second.
All right, we have motion made and second, all in favor? I'm going to raise a hands. Curtis, I think you can see them all.
I can.
Okay, then we are good. All right, Mr. Squire, we'll see you next month.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You too.
Okay, next applicant is Brandon O'Donnell, seeking a special permit under section 12.7 and section 7.1 of these Hampton zoning ordinance to construct an in-ground pool in the floodplain overlay district. The property is located at 10 West Street in a residential rural CR35 zoning district and in the floodplain overlay district. Mr. O'Donnell, are you present and ready to speak?
Yes, I am, and thank you so much for your time. I also have my wife here, Shira Simon, and is on the line too, who is our contractor, in case there are questions for him as well. So thank you very much.
Curtis, can you unshare or unshow your screen? That way we can see everybody. There we go. All right, go ahead, sir.
So we are requesting a special permit, as you mentioned, to construct an in-ground pool at our residential property on West Street in East Hampton.
Yep.
I can provide a little bit of commentary from planning staff, staff perspective, if that pleases the, the chair.
Sure.
So this is a unique, uh, special permitting situation. The two sections that this is subject to is 12.7 special permits writ broadly and 7.1, the section specifically referring to the floodplain and manhattan river protection overlay districts. The proposed pool and the latter portion of the property at 10 West Street fall within 100 feet of the manhattan river and are therefore subject to the local ordinance that's intended to supplement the wetlands protection act. Now, um, as part of their application, um, Mr. O'Donnell, Simon both submitted a, a, an email thread that explains that from the, under the Wetlands Protection Act, pools are exempt. But they're still subject to this particular ordinance, which is just a, a local check to ensure that appropriate uses are going within the area surrounding the river. Pools are allowed under section 7.1. And the reason I'm going through this lengthy spiel is because as far as I know, the history of the board, there have not been many special permits under section 7.1, so I'm just going through the motions here.
I appreciate it.
Feel free to cut me off. Um, within that context, I'm also keenly aware that this is usually an area of review by the conservation agent and by the conservation commission. In this particular case, because it's specifically exempted from the Wetlands Protection Act as it's a, as a residential pool, the, uh, our staff corresponded with the conservation agent who provided a memo to the board um, with some draft conditions that we worked out together that might help to allay any concerns associated with a pool within the floodplain overlay district. Uh, I'm going to just pull, I don't have it easily accessible. But in, in, in long and short, they were, um, no storage of chemicals within the 100-foot buffer around the manhattan river. And then, um, no draining of the, the in-ground pool into the manhattan river out of season. Um, beyond that, the proposed structure conforms with underlying zoning. And the last but not least thing is that the applicants are requesting waivers uh, for certain, for strict compliance with certain submittal requirements that the board can waive if they feel the applicant has provided enough information to reach a decision. From my own review perspective, my view is that, that they have submitted a good amount of information.
Okay.
But they like did their site plan themselves so they don't have a, an engineer's seal and stuff like that.
Yes, thanks for explaining that, Curtis, and thanks again to the board for, you know, taking us on tonight. And our, our property, we're trying to construct a pool in between our home and then we have a pre-existing barn on our property. It's going to go between those two and we're, the pool itself is approximately 150 feet from the manhattan river. And the pool is approximately 25 feet above the river itself. We have a, a three-tier property where the, at the street level is our home. And then our property steps down a level and then that's where our barn and the pool would go. And then our property steps down another 20 to 25 feet. And that's where the actual river would be. And we're about over 150 feet away from the river.
Yes, so that distance is like 150 feet, but we sit like way up high.
So. Okay.
And we, you know, we would like to, you know, do a silt fence and our contractors also here to discuss any other concerns you'd have about our construction process.
So I think, you know, my understanding is that the concern is the, the, obviously the location, the continued location in proximity to the man and rail, or river. Um, and I think that the, the conservation commission has laid out some very strict rules and the, the strictest being, you know, being able to drain that pool in the winter time uh, for, you know, winterizing that. And that's something that you're going to really have to be careful of. Uh, because whoever you hire to drain that pool and everything, they're going to have to understand that they cannot drain it into the backyard.
I have a question about that, John.
Yes.
Why would they drain the pool in the winter? I was going to ask a question about that. I think it's minor, but I would think in an in-ground pool, I know people that have them. And after heavy rains in the summer, when the water level on the pool gets so high and the water starts sloshing over the deck, I know people that drain some of the water out just so we
Right.
The water stays in the pool.
Correct.
And, and I'm assuming they could drain that water onto the west, onto the land on the west side of the pool. Just on the ground. And that would work. I doubt they'd drain the whole pool in the winter. I don't know.
No, you don't drain the entire pool, but you do bring it down a little.
Or just lower the level, yeah.
Yeah, you have to lower the water level.
But I think draining it onto their lawn on the west side of the pool would suffice.
That is, that's a conservation question and they, they, you know, the, the conservation commission or the, has stipulated how they would like it, they would not like it drained on the property.
I thought it said into the river.
The, I'll pull up the memo right now, um, because I've just managed to find it. One second.
Is it possible to drain it onto the road? Is that, is that okay?
You have to pump it.
The, the, the stormwater, the, the catch basins drain into the river.
Thank you.
But if it goes onto the lawn, the, the soil acts like a septic system and the chemicals eventually disperse.
True.
My understanding, and this isn't, this is, this has been both an education for me in terms of the fact that I don't understand wetlands and I don't understand pools all that well. Uh, as I did not know, there was a difference in terminology between above ground and in-ground pools until I was doing this. Uh, but the commentary that I'll provide is that, um, one of the conditions we bandied back and forth between the conservation agent and myself was the drainage of the pool. And I actually misspoke earlier when I said, um, the condition of the agent was to not drain within the 100-foot buffer. My initial language was, don't drain within the 100-foot buffer. Um, her commentary is, any drainage of the pool shall not discharge any water into the watershed of the floodplain slash manhattan river protection overlay districts. Um, my impression is that that watershed would include both the catch basins in the street and the, the soil of their entire property, including that area that is within 100 feet of the river, but also everywhere that's, that's beyond it, the natural infiltration. Yeah.
Elevation of the property.
I don't get it. Because this is outside of the conservation commission's jurisdiction with regards to weather and protection. And, and it's in the zoning board of appeals jurisdiction with regards to the floodplain overlay district. The proposed conditions from the conservation agent are help, to help guide the, the board in this process. So, you know, this is.
Are we to take those as advisement, not as edict?
Correct, and they're, they're to help, you know, the board sort of navigate in an area where you don't typically have a lot of permitting experience. So, you know, if, if if this makes sense and the application looks like it's something that you want to approve and those conditions would make it unfeasible to, to then build the pool or use the pool. Then I think that's something that the board can obviously discuss and work from there.
I would make a motion that we approve it with the drainage onto the lawn. If the street storm drainage is dumping into the man hand, which everything that comes off of cars dumping into the river, I don't have a problem if they're going to drain pool water with a few chemicals onto the lawn and have it slowly drained into the man hand.
In addition, um, the, the northwest, the long length of the pool, I don't know if you have the image, but the, the street side of the pool is not actually in the floodplain overlay district. That one, that one side of the pool is actually above that floodplain. So that's also a section where any drainage that we might have to do could also go into that part of our lawn. Linda, as you've so ingeniously suggested, plus it's not in the floodplain.
I, I think that that is going to be, you know, if we look at, the idea is that the water does not get drained into the river. I, I, I think that that's pretty clear. You're not going to take a hose out of the pool and put it in the river.
No, no, and it's 200 feet away, so I don't have a 200-foot hose.
And a drop too.
And the drawing that you have shown does show a 10-foot apron on the pool, on the river side and a four-foot apron on the, the, the short ends and then another four-foot apron along the, the, the north, northwest side. So, you know, if, if any discharge from the pool needs to happen, it needs to happen on the northwest side.
Yep.
And that no water shall be discharged directly into the floodplain.
We'll, we'll make sure that happens, yep.
Okay, does that, does that sound like a reasonable condition for the board to accept?
Sounds good to me.
Yep.
Steve?
Yep.
All right, Lindsay? She must be on mute.
Works for me.
Okay. All right, so that sounds like we're, uh, we're moving forward here.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your time.
Well, we're not done yet, so don't, don't get too excited. We wish they were all that easy. Okay, so as we scroll through this and all that.
So I don't have a draft decision for this one because I thought it would be presumptuous. But there are in the memo that I provided, the draft findings and
Yes.
Proposed conditions. The proposed conditions are, are largely the same as the ones we just discussed. However, I would amend proposed condition D to say shall not drain into the wetland, um, sorry, the floodplain overlay district slash manhattan river protection district.
Yeah, I, I think that that's the, that's the key there. Is that the water, any water that shall be discharged from the pool shall not be discharged into the uh, overlay district.
Can I, um, may, maybe also just that there's no surface water runoff into the, into directly into the river either? So it should like soak into the ground well before it reaches the river.
Yeah. Yeah, all right. Curtis, where are your findings or, or?
I'll pull them up, I'll pull them up. One sec.
Okay. I'm scrolling through your file here.
They're paid, they're the memo for 10 West and they're on pages one and two. I'm going to pull them up now. So there's two different sections of findings. Um, 12.7.9 is standard for all special permits. And then 7.183 is the specific standards for projects that fall within the floodplain overlay district.
Okay. I was not in the right place or you don't have that online. So, okay, now I have to make this digger. There we go. All right. So to, to, to increase flood hazard, complies with provisions underlying, conserve a shoreline vegetation. Hey. All right, so I think that that's pretty straightforward. Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve a 20 by 40 foot in-ground swimming pool for not the applicant's name.
Yeah.
Brandon O'Donnell.
Brandon O'Donnell.
For the O'Donnells at 10 West Street. Um, a special permit subject to, um, the applicant is responsible for obtaining any permits, licenses, et cetera, from other regulatory bodies as appropriate. Any changes to the site plan for the proposed accessory pool As approved must be submitted to the zoning board of appeals for review and approval. Two, the applicant must not store chemicals associated with pool maintenance within the floodplain. Manhand River Protection Overlay District. Three, the applicant must utilize best practices during construction to prevent runoff or sedimentation in violation of the Wetlands Protection Act. And four, the applicant. Shall not drain the pool. Directly into the watershed of the floodplain Manhand River Protection Overlay District.
And, and I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, um, comment here that you're, the, I would amend that one, Member Bush, to, so it's not watershed, just into the area of the floodplain. Slash Manhand River Protection, yep, because the, the watershed extends further. And last, um, Jamie commented about, um, uh, standing water, sorry, um, could you repeat that comment, Jamie?
Uh, surface runoff, so if you're draining it on the north side and then it, um, you know. Cool, and then runs along the surface because it's really dry.
Because there's a lot of water.
So basically you'd like build a sump or something like that to catch the water and let it drain down into.
So I, I believe I have a motion with those amendments, so long as that's comfortable with you, Member Bush.
Yes.
Great, okay, so we have a motion. Can we get a second?
A second if.
All right, and can we, any further discussion from the board?
Oh, are there any members of the public who are to speak on the subject?
Are there any members of the public interested in speaking concerning this?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop sharing so I can.
There we go.
See, my apologies all. I don't see anybody.
All right, so with that said, uh, all in favor, rise, raise a hands? Okay.
Uh, Linda, are you voting if you're, so, oh, you're just off camera. My apologies, my apologies, my apologies. I actually didn't see, I actually did not see. I'm not trying to give you a hard time, my sincere apologies.
All right, and so we have a unanimous vote. Uh, the vote has been approved. Uh, so from here, uh, it takes a few days for us to get the decision written and everything like that, at which point it will be stamped by the, by. Uh, it'll be submitted to town hall and stamped by the town clerk, at which point there's a 20-day appeal period. And should anyone read it in the newspaper and say, oh, you know, I really didn't like that, I have a problem with that, they may appeal it within those 20 days, after which point, then you are free to go. You're not going to dig anything right now, the ground's frozen anyway, but at least you can start the ball rolling.
Thanks, if you guys want to come to the pool opening party, you have to. COVID restrictions to lift first, but that.
All right. Alright, sounds great, congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much for your time and Curtis, thank you for your help and Cassie, that was, that was a big help with working with the city, so we appreciate your time. Thank you.
I do.
We'll be in touch.
Okay. So, let's, I gotta go back here. Next meeting. So our next applicant. Have to pull up the application here. It's not what I want. Please bear with me. Using myself out there. Next meeting. Agenda, there we go. Next applicant is Kirsten Loser, I hope I pronounced that correct. Uh, uh, seeking a special permit under section 12.7 of the East Hampton zoning ordinance. Uh, a stormwater management permit under article seven of the East Hampton zoning ordinance. To expand an existing animal hospital, properties located for 10 Main Street on the, in, in the industrial zoning district. So, what do you have to say? Oh, you're, you're.
Well.
Mute.
I'll let Kirsten chime in here while she gets her mute button. I'm the civil engineer and the designer for the project. My name is Becky Sparkle. Uh, and I'm pretty sure that Kirsten is expecting me to do most of the talking here tonight. However, uh, she's now unmuted, so Kirsten, if you do have something to add, um, please feel free.
Hi, I'm Kirsten Loser, I'm the owner at East Hampton Animal Hospital now. Um, and, uh, we've grown the practice, um, to three doctors from the original one doctor practice, um, that Dr. Hayden had. Um, and we've really severely outgrown the space, um, and are hoping to expand.
Okay. All right, so what are you looking to do?
Okay, well, if I may, uh, begin a screen share, I can walk you through the, uh, little presentation I prepared to orient board members here. Um, you'll have to forgive the construction project going on in the background here of my house too, I'm. I am, I've been building my house for years now and there's lots of stuff happening, but, um, so.
Do you should have, you should have shared capacity, yep, great.
There, eh, technology when it works. So. Uh, yes, this is the East Hampton Animal Hospital, um, a little visual aid of what they're hoping to do from a structural standpoint. Uh, I want to introduce the, the team, uh, I, most of which are here this evening, uh, obviously Kirsten. Uh, as well as Dr. Bobby Kenna is a primary member over there at East Hampton Animal Hospital. Uh, I'm the civil designer, Becky Sparkle, uh, the architect is HAI Architecture. I'm not sure that a member from HI is, is here this evening, um, maybe they are and I just don't see them on the participant list.
I, I don't see Rick on the, on the call, so.
Okay, um, that's okay, and, um, the, the builder is Jason Graver, who is here from Elemental Carpentry and Construction. Uh, and as, as already been said, the goal of this project and permit is to get a, a new animal hospital on site. Uh, formally seeking approval of a special permit for. There's something, I just heard more, okay. There's background noise, but I'll keep going unless, uh, people have trouble hearing me. Seeking approval of a special permit under section 12.7 of the zoning ordinance and article seven, sections 12 dash 76 through 1285. Of the East Hampton City ordinances, we are also formally requesting a waiver from section 10.514 point C1. Which would normally require sidewalk connecting businesses. However, being no other sidewalks, uh, for businesses on Route 10, it's not a pedestrian-friendly corridor, uh, we are requesting a waiver from that, uh, requirement. The facility has been an animal hospital, a veterinary clinic for 34 years under the previous vet, Dr. Hayden. Uh, was purchased by Dr. Loser in 2018. Uh, it's an old house, um, and it's, it's non-conforming, it's just about a foot away from the front setback on Womelka Way. About half the setback necessary from Route 10. Um, it is, as a building, it is totally dysfunctional as a, as a modern animal hospital. And hence the necessity to, to rebuild on site. Uh, has not enough parking, it's about half of what is really needed, and it doesn't have any stormwater treatment. And looking at the existing condition, uh, the situation, everything it's hatched out is, uh, existing pavement or buildings that. Uh, would be removed as part of this project, so the existing parking area with two drive entrances onto Route 10. The existing house, uh, a little shed in the back. Though, those are the main infrastructure on site which would all be removed. As you can see, it is right up against the lot line on the north and, um, 34 feet from, uh, the front on Route 10, which is supposed to be a 50-foot setback. I won't go through all the details of the dimensional regulations, well, everything is met usually by quite a wide margin. I do want to point out. Although it shouldn't really matter to the application that normally if you're going to do a new lot in the zoning industrial. It is a 40,000 square foot minimum lot area, it's, uh, this current lot is, uh, 39,635 square feet, so it's pre-existing non-conforming. However, that, that probably doesn't have much, uh, much impact on the application. I just want to make sure it's been mentioned.
Yep.
All right, and then here's the site plan, here's what we're trying to do. Uh, at least the applicant is trying to do, so the old house was down here, so they're looking to build a 3,300 square foot building. That would have roughly twice the parking of the current condition. Currently, the parking is all mostly in the front yard setback, which is also non-conforming. So we're getting the parking back further from the road of Main Street, uh, as well as further from Womelka Way. And, um, installing handicap accessible spaces, uh, there's, you know, pedestrian walkways around the building. Uh, we have a dumpster in the back over here, a little bit of an island amidst the parking area because this row of parking was too long to be contiguous parking without interruption. We have, uh, expanded the entryways because right now the, um. The in and out access drives are about one and a half lanes wide, so effectively it's one-way traffic, so it's a little bit, a little dicey. So we're, we're making them 18 feet, so we have two clear, uh, ways in and out of the site as well as, uh, parking. Uh, rather directional arrows on the pavement to give, uh, people a sense of lanes one side to the other. We are installing, uh, obviously sanitary sewer water, electrical, you know, to the building. Um, and importantly, especially from my end of the world as civil designer, uh, stormwater management system which will operate in the. I'm going to say the top left corner of the site, uh, the surveyor put the north arrow north in the bottom left corner. So if I go left, east-west, it's going to get very confusing because everything's on a diagonal, so, um, the top left corner of the site here is the stormwater management area. Uh, we had a meeting with the Conservation Commission on Monday night, uh, they're generally very satisfied with the situation. They had a couple of minor questions. Like they want to know what seeds are going to be in the grass seed that we're planting, so I, I have to get that information to them. But otherwise, I don't think we're going to have any problem getting, uh, approval of the stormwater permits from the Conservation Commission. There were no technical issues. At, at that time, so I think we're going to be fine there, but we will have to go to the next meeting to close that out. Uh, but the, the gist of it is that there's a sediment for bay and then there's a infiltration and detention area through here. Uh, with a control structure that would outlet to armored surface out in the road right of way. Um, this is one of the points that came up at the Concom meeting and, uh, trying to get sorted out. I know that we heard from the city engineer that he didn't, he mentioned that this was here and sped specifically, he didn't have a problem with it. The Concom wanted to hear from the DPW, I've been talking to Curtis, maybe he has more information for us this evening? Can I ask Curtis, do you have more information that you'd be able to add now?
Yes, uh, the city engineer, uh, spoke to the director of the DPW regarding the, what you see there, which is a riprap infiltration system, and forgive me if I'm using the wrong terminology. Um, with that falls at least in part under the, um, Womelka, Womelka Way Public Right-of-Way. Um, the comment that I received this morning was that, uh, DPW and city engineering are both comfortable with this. So long as it doesn't substantially impact the, uh, paved area of Womelka Way. Um, does that, is, is that? Is that meetable with the plans as proposed?
Absolutely, yeah, we're, we're not, we're only working in the ditch, there's already existing ditch, so we're going to harden the existing surface. The water won't be able to get up to the road once it goes into the ditch.
I'm forwarding this com, the comment that I'm making now informally and verbally, I've asked for a letter in letterhead that, that he can produce, should he, should he so desire, um. He's going to be doing the same for the Conservation Commission. I am reflecting this comment to you with, uh, city engineer Dan Murphy's explicit permission, so we're all on the same page there.
Thank you, Curtis, much appreciated.
Thank you all.
Um, as far as other features of the site, uh, actually, I've already covered most of it, but I have been in contact with the, um. Uh, fire chief regarding, um, this accessway, he, he asked that I, I make some modifications, so we have a large arcing, uh, radius here. That's just to make sure that the city's fire apparatus can get into and out of the site. Um, I'm, I don't know if he has submitted comments specifically, but I, I know personally that he's satisfied with the revisions and that we can get. Emergency vehicles into and out of this facility without any difficulty.
Okay.
So, a little closer look at the building itself, um, this is the architectural rendering. So you can see, um, the, you know, it's, although it's a relatively tall building at, uh, I have to move the zoom window. Uh, about 29 feet to the roof peak, uh, it is a one and a half story building and the, the upper sort of mezzanine is just storage, nothing else. So the entire operation is a one-floor operation. And, uh, it has a sign that is sort of a triangular sign, so this, it's projecting from the building, so the center of the sign kind of sticks out toward the viewer. It's not quite, uh, clear because it's not an isometric drawing where you would see it, you know, getting smaller as it was farther away. Uh, but this gives a, a very good sense of the facade of the building and that obviously it's, it's a relatively modern structure and, um. I'm, I'm fond of it, uh, I think HAI did a good job, the architects, looking at the side elevation and rear, the sides are basically mirror images. So this is a side that's visible from the parking lot. And, um, you can see it's long sloping roofs, this is, won't be very visible from Route 10, uh, Main Street, but. Um, if you were to park on site, you would see this view of the roof lines, and if you were all the way behind the building, uh, you would, this is the view that you would have. Uh, there are, um, staff entrances and some, some other side entrances to get in and out of the building with, um. Isolating animals and, and keeping, you know, you can't, you can't just mix all the animals together. So there, there are various ways to get into and out of the building for various reasons, uh, I think it's a well-designed facility. Um, I'm not going to get into the details of the floor plan, but I'll just bring it up because it's a lot of lines and chaos and honestly, I'm not terribly familiar with the floor plan. Uh, I will say that there's a waiting area up front at the front of the building, you can see these sort of triangular lines that project, that's the overhang, which is what the sign sits on. So I know, uh, you'll probably be interested in the sign. And, um, and then it's, you know, office space, exam room, surgery room, recovery room, that kind of, uh, facilities. And I'm sure the, the owners could tell you a lot more about the interior if you had questions. Um, looking briefly, oh, what happened to my visual, okay, um. This was fine earlier and I'm sorry for the weird graphics, um, I do have a clear copy of the sign, um. But I also submitted one with the application, so you've all had an opportunity to look at it. Um, and unfortunately, uh, the best rendition I have of the sign is now here, uh, that you get a sense, the sign's about, it's 24 square feet, 24 and a half square feet. Uh, when you add up the sign on both, uh, on the building, all of that, as well as there is an existing sign, um, freestanding sign by the road. Uh, all of that is, I think, 91 square feet and the limit, I believe, is 100 square feet for the property, so we're, we're under the limit. Um, which I was going to describe when you looked at the dimensions that I had on this drawing, but obviously there's something glitchy. And I apologize, um, and, you know, really that's the run-through for the project, uh. I believe the plan and the application address all the bylaw requirements, you know, we're definitely improving drainage, there's no stormwater management system now. Uh, we're improving safety and access to the property, uh, this is a longstanding business in the community. And it's the same staff and the same clients, they just need better parking and a, and a modern facility in which to do their job. So with that, I'm going to, uh, just sort of leave it on the site plan, uh, and any questions that the board has, I'd be very happy to discuss.
Can I ask you a question about the large sloping roofs?
Yes, sir.
Will there be any, uh, pedestrians exposed or vehicles exposed directly underneath the large, uh, roofs? Particularly this time of the year with snow control and ice control?
Sure, um, I'm going to take a look at this, so that, the, the main entrance has a covered, um, area. So there, the, the long sloping roofs all move to the rear of the building, uh, maybe this is a better view. So people mostly will be coming in through here and under a covered protection area, so that, that's the main entrance where almost all the traffic is coming and going. Um, it does have a bit of a roof, um, that, that does reach out over, um, but it's not an excessive amount and plus there's a covered canopy there. Uh, there are other roofs and doors, uh, around, um. You know, just like all buildings, doors sort of come and go, but the, the main access and the public access is a covered, protected.
Would there be parking in the rear though? Would people be parking in the rear where I?
Generally, staff is going to be parking that by the dumpster, it's, you know, not the nicest place for your, your clients to park, and with the entrance being over here. Uh, people who are coming as clients, they're going to congregate to the front of the building, it's, it's closest to the door, people always park closest to the door, uh, given the opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have two minor questions.
Yes.
Um, on my reduced copy of the site plan, the, the very rear of the property. Um, I don't know if you can see my little arrow there, it's very, very steep, because this is a, you're obviously moving. Because this is a, you're obviously moving earth around because the property slopes. To the back. Is that just grass?
Yes, it's a one to one slope, which is what I consider sort of the minimum stable. It does get broader, but right, right behind this turnaround, once there's sort of a safe love, more level area, it does get reasonably steep. Are there half foot contours, so it's not quite as dramatic as maybe other plans you see, which are only working with one footers. But that area, and this is part that I'm reconsidering in my evaluation with the. Conservation Commission because they wanted to talk about seed mixture. Which the first time I ever heard that question, but I think it's a good question. My, my recommendation is for ease of maintenance that the area that is the steepest at the very back and on the side of the detention basin before it starts to flatten out. That there they install perennial native grasses that basically don't need to get cut down. And maybe once a year you knock them down with a weed whacker. Where you could also leave them up all winter, the snow will compress them and they'll come up in the spring. But so it may not be, it won't be manicured lawn back on the steep portion of the site at the rear.
But I have a dog and when I take her someplace, particularly the vet who let them out at the car and you let them find a place to pee before you go in the building, just in case. And that's why I was curious how steep that was, that someone's not gonna. Um. Fall, again, I can't tell from my drawing, so it's, it's not really steep.
It's not a cliff, I mean, it's, it's a one to one slope. It's not something that you'd be inclined to walk down, you know, for a recreational stroll, but it's definitely something that you could get up and down if necessary. Okay, there is quite a bit of of level area, you know, the property is is actually mostly level. So all of the area through here is is almost dead flat through the sides. So there's much better places to to bring your dog than the slope at the back.
Yeah, but you want to hide your dog peeing from the other. So you take her to the back. One other question and this has.
For the dogs, I totally agree.
This has to do, we never do new buildings and this is the second new building we've had in a couple of months. And so basically, this is a question for Jamie and or Curtis. I'm not a big fan of two curb cuts on such a small lot. Because every curb cut is a potential point of conflict with the main road Route 10. But to me, the zoning board of appeals really doesn't have a, have a say in that. What is the planning board's position on curb cuts?
So the the zoning ordinance actually talks about that under the parking section of the ordinance. And it does require curb cuts to be. I I think it's 50 feet from an intersection and 50 feet from each other. To prohibit, sort of like limit interactions between cars that might, so so in this case where there's two curb cuts going into the site. They have to be a minimum, I believe, the 50 foot.
So this is legitimate, I mean, then the city of East Hampton doesn't have a concern with this.
So I mean, we, we look to the ordinance as the the minimum standards. And then again, this is the whole special permit process is for the board to look at the adequacy of the proposal.
So I'm not going to make an issue out of it if.
In 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 my review, in my review, I didn't raise any subject with the curb cuts in the memo granting those double 50 footers. It's 50 foot from the intersection between Wamalka Way and Main Street. And it's and the two curb cuts are like, I believe, just more than 50 feet from one another. But Bucky has also laid out a way in which they provide for two lane travel. So all that makes, first of all, it complies with the minimum standards of the ordinance. And second of all, it makes a certain amount of logical sense to me and was reviewed by one of the primary safety folks in Dan Constantine, the 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 fire inspector. But all that being said, I I enthusiastically echo what Jamie's saying, which is that those standards are. You, you can have an opinion about the the curb cuts, even if the ordinance does not demand that that you have an opinion about them.
Okay. All right, so if you could scroll back up to the the existing structure plan or existing layout. Yeah, and if you look very carefully at that. The previous owner made an effort to make the parking area in the house look like a dog. And I was wondering.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention, I will.
I was wondering if any effort was going to be made to to allow the same visual aspect from Google Earth.
I'll talk to Kirsten about that.
You will never unsee that now, of course, right?
Never.
I just, I happen to be scrolling through, I saw that, I I need to say something, it's too good not to say it.
I I retire, I will see you all never.
Okay, so now back to our regular scheduled programming here. So the, at this point, yeah, the, there doesn't seem to be much. You know, you've met the requirements, you've explained everything. It is more of a, you know, does it meet everything? And your one question of the curb or the the sidewalks, there are no sidewalks in the area. There's no sidewalks on Wamalka Way or in front of Yankee machinery there, whatever they call themselves.
Casey's Small Arms, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, in the, at the back of Wamalka, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, or to your, yeah, looking at the property to your, to your right, there's not, there's no sidewalks there.
No.
Um, so. Whereas there's no sidewalks, I don't see a need to continue or or improve a sidewalk where there is. And that's just, that's my personal opinion, I will ask the board if they have any other thoughts provided with that.
No, no see the point of a sidewalk from nowhere to nowhere.
Well, I agree.
Okay.
Same there.
And, yeah, everything else seems to meet the existing, you know, all the other, you know, concerns that were were brought up and you you've provided all the information required. Uh, so at this point, is there, let me, I will close the public or this part part and ask, is there anyone else in the in the area there that wants to talk about this? And I don't see anybody. Is there anybody out there?
One other comment, I like their lighting plan.
Thank you very much. I have a lot of confidence in that lighting designer, they've been, they've been very good to me.
Okay. All right, so at this point, we will close the hearing, the public portion of the hearing. Board, do you have any conversations that you'd like to have concerning?
I think you actually need to motion, someone needs to motion to close, my apologies.
Motion to close. Yeah, all these rules, regulations.
Sorry.
Uh huh. Motion to close the public hearing. Okay, we have a motion. We get a second.
Again.
Second from Tony, all in favor? Anyways, all right, so we have closed the public hearing portion. Discussion amongst the board, any thoughts, questions, concerns?
Looks good to me.
Yeah, it's a nice upgrade.
Yes, very nice. All right, so we'll make a, can somebody make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve a. What's the size of the building Curtis, 3,000?
3317.
Yeah, yeah, pretend I said that.
17 square foot veterinary hospital at 410 Main Street. Subject to the applicant is responsible for obtaining any permits, licenses, et cetera, from other regulatory bodies as appropriate. Any changes to the site plan for the proposed.
Accessory pool, oops.
Accessory for the proposed veterinary hospital as approved must be submitted to the zoning board of appeals for review and approval.
Further note that it sounded like in dialogue, the planning, the the ZDA found that the project conforms with all relevant state and federal regulations, protects the borders and city amenities, provides for convenient, safe vehicle pedestrian. Movement in and around site and enlighten the fact of there's no pedestrian sidewalk already present, that they're not going to require that the applicant provide one. It possesses adequate drainage and has in fact upgraded the site drainage from the existing structure, mitigates adverse impacts on city infrastructures. Integrates into the surrounding landscapes, minimizes in area vegetation removal and maintains consistency with the surrounding area per the standards for special permit. Yes, we have a motion from Linda and I apologize for constantly interrupting.
That's okay. So motion is made, can we get a second?
A second it.
20 seconds to motion, all in favor? Okay. Move, start to move forward. So as I said previously, we'll write this up, it's going to take a couple few days. At which point then you'll get notification from Town Hall that your application's been approved. There's then a 20 day appeal period, after which point you're good to go, you can take it down to the Department of Records there in Northampton and. Start making plans.
Thank you very much, we'll see you at the pool party.
No dogs allowed, sorry.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate it, take care.
All right, so board members will stay on. It looks like we'll have at least two people to listen to next month for, that are getting continued. And whether they get their act together or can do anything, we'll see. Uh, is there anything else currently on the agenda? Curtis?
No, I don't believe so, one second. Call my bluff, but yeah. No, there's no other item on the agenda for the evening.
Okay. All right, so we will, we'll see what happens as they say.
Before we, and can I ask Steve a question, as we haven't officially met? And I see you have a Utica sweatshirt on, I used to live near Utica.
Yeah, I went to Utica College.
Oh, I lived at Forestport.
When it was part of Syracuse.
Oh, long time ago.
Yeah, graduated in 76, but people don't know what snow was like until they spent some time up there, that's for sure.
The best part about that is Jamie nodding with like the sagacious nod of someone who knows really well.
I I spent four years in Rochester, New York, I I know, I know cold, I know.
Don't they have tunnels?
Tunnels underneath the the.
Buildings.
So it's, you know, it should give you a hint as to how bad the snow was. And it had nothing on Buffalo, I mean Buffalo got it, they'd get 10 feet of snow and we'd get two feet.
They get all the lake effect snow in Buffalo.
Yes, they do.
Yes.
All right, well, if nobody else has anything, motion to.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Cheers. Second. Second, all in favor? Thank you much, thank you all for your help.
Thank you, stay safe.
Nice job.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.